Everybody, today is January 27th, 2014. It is 4:00 PM. If I can get a call to order and a roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mayor Shirley?
Here.
Commissioner Blanchard?
Here.
Commissioner Crawford?
Here.
Commissioner Hardy?
Here.
Commissioner Householder?
Here.
Everyone at the tables, we could have everyone stand up and do a pledge of allegiance in a moment of silence.
(inaudible)
Thank you. We do have some awards and proclamations. Are these microphones working? I think so. They working now?
They're all fine working?
No.
It's more for the at-home players.
Are we working now?
This never happened when Dennis Kissinger was the city manager.
One of those kind of days.
Is it just mine?
No, it's everybody.
It is everybody's okay.
Probably the overall ceiling speaker power.
It looks like Access is busy back there trying to get it up and going. What's the verdict there? Jason, do you have the handheld?
We have no sound in the mics.
Mr. Gage, does Access actually control the mics or is that something here in our building?
Is that Jim Schroeder?
It is. There we go. All right.
It was just a ploy to get you out of your seat.
Okay.
Yeah.
In case no one could hear me a second ago, we are going to go ahead and move on to awards and proclamations. Madam Clerk?
Item 3.1, "The Month of January 2014, the Stalking Awareness Month in the City of Salina. Susan Leach, Director of Client Services," will read the proclamation.
Hello? Good afternoon. Actually, Susan Leach couldn't be with us today. My name is Linda Anderson. I am the economic advocate for D-VAC, and I will go ahead and read our proclamation. Whereas in the United States, 6.6 million people over the age of 18 are stalked each year in the United States, with an estimate of 1 in 6 women and 1 in 19 men experience stalking victimization. Whereas 1 in 6 women and 1 in 19 men have at some point during their lifetime in which they felt very fearful or believed that they or someone else close to them would be harmed or killed. And whereas in the United States, 2 out of 3 people are stalked by someone they know. And whereas 1 in 4 victims report that a stalker uses technology such as computers, global positioning systems, devices, or hidden cameras to track the victim's daily activities. And whereas in Kansas, 713 stalking incidents are reported to law enforcement, 5,066 protection from stalking orders were filed in 2012. And whereas the Kansas statistics do not represent the true incidence and prevalence of stalking in Kansas for the following reasons: Not all law enforcement agencies participate in the KBI survey and not all victims report the crime to law enforcement. And whereas stalking is difficult to recognize, investigate, and prosecute because unlike other crimes, stalking is a series of acts taking many forms such as assault, threats, vandalism, burglary, or animal abuse, as well as unwanted cards, calls, gifts, or visits. And whereas stalking is pervasive, dangerous, and potentially lethal, weapons are used to harm or threaten victims in 1 in 5 cases nationally. Nationally, in 76% of intimate partner femicide, which is the homicide of females, the victims were stalked by their partner prior to their murder. 89% of femicide victims have been both physically assaulted and stalked in the 12 months prior to their murder. And whereas 46% of stalking victims experience at least 1 unwanted contact per week, 1 in 8 employed victims lose time from work, 1 in 7 victims relocate as a result of being stalked, and 11% of stalking victims have been stalked for 5 years or more. And whereas in declaring this month of January as stalking awareness month, we encourage all citizens to speak out against stalking, to provide support for survivors of this hideous crime, and to encourage our community leaders to hold perpetrators accountable and make prevention efforts a priority by hosting events, by creating policies at school and work, and by working with your local sexual and/or domestic violence victim service providers. Now therefore, the City of Salina do hereby proclaim this month, January 2014, as stalking awareness month, and urges our citizens to recognize and assist those that serve the rights and needs of victims of stalking.
Do you have any events planned for the month of January?
Well, January's pretty much over, but we did do our bargain basket window. We talked to some groups out at, very prevalent in teen, teen getting about, out there on our Facebook saying, you know, look at your Facebook settings, see who's tracking you, you know, talking about apps and...
Saying you have a good presence in the schools.
We're trying.
Good.
Yeah, it is. It is very prevalent in that age, so, yeah.
Awesome.
What is the website? I'm sorry, on the Facebook page maybe, so the people at home?
Our Facebook page is Domestic Violence at Central Kansas. Like us on Facebook. And, you know, next month is going to be Teen Dating Violence Month, and we're also going to put some more information out there as our months go by and throughout the year about sexual assault and domestic violence.
Glad you're out there teaching the kids about this and letting girls, especially young girls in our community, educating them. That's the most important prevention is education, so thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
And I have your proclamation.
Item 3.2, "Presentation of the Buford M. Watson Jr. Award of Excellence in Public Management to City Manager Jason Gage by the Kansas Association of City-County Management."
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Diane Stoddard. I'm the Vice President of the Kansas Association of City-County Management, and I'm also an Assistant City Manager in Lawrence. I'm joined here today by a number of KACM board members and also our President Trey Cocking, who is the City Manager of Aggison. And we're here this afternoon to present our association's highest honor to your City Manager, Jason Gage. The Buford M. Watson Award for Excellence in Public Management is given annually by KACM to a local government manager who has displayed the attributes of the late Buford M. Watson Jr., former City Manager of Lawrence. Jason has a number of significant accomplishments in his career, and he has positively impacted our profession by his sound and ethical management, his dedication to citizen service, and his commitment to continuous improvement. And he has also positively impacted our association by serving as its president here just 2 years ago. And I'd now like to invite Dennis Hayes, who is the County Administrator of the Unified Government of Wyandotte County, Kansas City, Kansas, to speak a little bit about the Buford Watson Award, and he was last year's Watson winner, and he'll be presenting the award to Mr. Gage.
Thank you.
Dennis? If I may, for just a few moments, share with you why this award is so important. This is Super Bowl week, and everybody's going to be watching the big game, and the Vince Lombardi Trophy will be presented to the winner. What I'm beginning to realize as I get a bit older and more gray hair is that my son-in-law wasn't sure who that was, who Vince Lombardi was. So as an association, we want to make sure that the younger folks and the citizens of Salina are fully aware of the significance of this award, and for city managers across the state of Kansas, receiving the Buford Watson Award is like receiving the Vince Lombardi Trophy. So to put it in context, this is a really big deal for professionals in our business. Second thought, who was Buford? Buford Watson served in Texas, Oklahoma, Iowa, and Kansas as a professional manager or assistant manager during the course of his career. If Buford were with us, he would be 84 years old this month. Buford served as City Manager in Lawrence, Kansas from 1970 to 1988, and that's where most of us had the opportunity to know Buford personally, at least those of us that are older. And the story I can share with you regarding Buford is he always took time with the young folks, the young folks in the community, as well as the young folks in the profession. As I was entering this profession 25 and 30 years ago, he had a very special way about coming forward and always talking with the young folks, introducing himself, and making the young members of our profession feel comfortable and valued. Today, as Diane has indicated, this award is being presented to your City Manager for the City of Salina. But I would like, Madam Mayor, if I may, just to ask those members of our association that are present to stand. All of you stand please. And I would point out that we have a number of award winners of the Buford Watson Award present with us today, so thank you all for attending. At this time, Madam Mayor, I would like to invite your City Manager and his wife to join us here at the podium. The reason we think it's important to invite the spouse is this is a team effort, a profession that is this demanding and requires this much from a family in terms of support and contributions to the community, and we think that it's important to recognize the spouse as well. So at this time, Jason, the award that was presented to you on December 5th, and now in your own hometown for your City Manager, I read Buford M. Watson Jr. Award for Excellence in Public Management, presented to Jason Gage, City Manager, City of Salina. We honor your commitment and dedication to the profession and your enthusiasm for life as exemplified by our colleague and friend Buford Watson. Jason, congratulations.
If I may, I'd like to speak from over there so I can look back and forth to both you and the crowd. Would that be okay?
Of course. It's your moment. You can sit wherever you want.
Except on my lap.
I'm a little more comfortable over here, anyway.
Please.
When I was in college, I had to decide what I was going to do, and I was headed down the law school route at some point, so who knows, maybe I would be sitting in that chair eventually. But I happened to need a class, it was an elective class, and a buddy of mine said, "Hey, how about this public administration class? It's an evening class." And I said, "Sure, why not?" And so I took it. It was taught by a gentleman, his name is Tom Simpson. He was the City Administrator in Carthage, and administrator and managers are very much the same. And I was first introduced to local government at that point in time. Ironically, Mr. Simpson had followed someone else who had just been in Carthage and started his career there. His name was Dennis Kissinger, so that name rings a bell for those of you here in Salina because I followed Dennis here. But Tom, he introduced city management to me. He said, "You get to be a part of making a difference in the world." And I thought, "Well, you know, at the grassroots level," and I thought, "Well, that sounds pretty exciting." You know, no offense, Greg, but it sounded more exciting than law. So I...
It is.
So I went down, I went to the University of Missouri, and for some folks here, that's a bad place still, but I went there and I got my MPA, and I knew from the very, you know, moment before I enrolled there that I wanted to be a city manager. And I thought, "The idea of being a part of making a difference is a big deal." And, you know, when we talk to our new employees here, we talk to all of our folks here, we talk about, "We're protectors, we're community builders." We talk about the integrity in what we do and how important that really is because we have, we walk around with invisible hats. We don't see them, but other people see them, and those hats say authority and power and a lot of things. And the hats don't say responsibility, and that's how I look at it. It's a responsibility, and it's a big one. And so we do have the ability to impact people's lives on a daily basis. And I'll be honest with you, I don't know of a job that has this much of an opportunity to do that, and so it's exceptionally fulfilling. And to be able to work with the people I've been able to work with, elected officials, the City Commission, my staff, and any place that I've been has been fabulous, and this is an exceptional group here. I really don't know that I've met people who are so service-oriented as the folks here in Salina. They're awesome to work with. My peers are just wonderful people, and, you know, they don't realize it, but they teach every day. You talk to them, you learn something every time you talk to somebody, and I've come to very much appreciate that. So I just feel lucky to be, you know, be able to get on, onboard, and be able to tag along, and it's my pleasure, and I couldn't think of doing anything else, and I'm just very, very, very grateful. So thank you all.
And thank you for all your hard work and dedication. We're glad you choose Salina as your home. Moving on to our last of our awards and proclamations.
Item 3.3, "Presentation of the Silver Excellence in Concrete Pavements Award to the City of Salina, Pavers Incorporated and Wilson &amp; Company by the American Concrete Pavement Association for the category of overlays at the Ohio and Crawford Intersection Improvement Project."
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today. My name's Todd Lotzarella. I'm the Executive Director of the Missouri-Kansas Chapter of the American Concrete Pavement Association. Privileged to be here to present our award. I'm not very, I'm an engineer, so I'm not very funny, so I brought visuals with me to make up for that. So as you can see, our award-winning team there, as well as the City as Pavers Incorporated, Wilson &amp; Company, Salina Concrete Products. We did, we did present this award in Puerto Rico this year. It was our 50th anniversary, so we took it offshore to somewhere real nice, but you'll be happy to know it rained 7 out of 8 days I was there. So we really didn't miss anything, but I'm happy to come out here and present the award. Our association represents the concrete paving industry here, contractors and cement manufacturers in Kansas, Missouri. We do a lot of technology transfer, and we're really out there promoting our products and hopefully convincing owners to give us the opportunity to provide concrete products for your infrastructure needs. So certainly, the award today is our National ACPA Silver Award winner, as you mentioned, for concrete overlay streets and roads for the Salina and, the Ohio and Crawford Street Overlay Project. I know it's not the city's first overlay project. I just drove through the one on South 9th Street that was done quite a few years back, and it's performing great. So I really want to say I really appreciate the city's willingness to look at concrete paving products and look at new technologies like concrete overlays. Not all owners and engineers are always as open to trying new things. So again, I really want to thank the city, Dan and Wayne, and Tyler Glissman with Wilson &amp; Company and our contractor, Pavers Incorporated. I think this award really demonstrates the commitment of the award-winning team and how well they work together. So again, on behalf of the American Concrete Pavement Association, I'd like to present this award to Wayne Nelson. Wayne? Congratulations. There's a national award for excellence in concrete pavement presented to the City of Salina in recognition of outstanding design and construction for Ohio and Crawford Intersection Overlay Improvements in Salina, Kansas, Silver Winner, Overlay Streets and Roads for projects constructed in 2012. Thanks again, Wayne. To recognize Tyler Glissman with Wilson &amp; Company, the designer, consultant, consulting engineer on the project. Tyler, congratulations. And Neil Siskowski with Pavers Incorporated here, who's our contractor located right here in Salina, Kansas. Come on up, Neil. Neil's folks forgot to bring the award they already had, so we... This is our Vince Lombardi Trophy. This is our Super Bowl right here. Thank you again, I really appreciate it.
Very good.
Good job, guys.
Thanks. We need you to sign for that, Wayne.
Wayne, when you went to college, did you know you wanted to do concrete for a living and that was going to be your life's ambition?
Actually, my life's ambition was to work in water and wastewater.
Oh, okay. And Martha will probably get into work here.
The grass is always greener, especially out...
Especially in the wastewater.
Especially out toward the town.
We'll go ahead and move on to citizen forums. This is a time for any citizen to come up and approach the City Commissioner on anything that's not on today's agenda.
I'm Cheryl Musbell, 1035 Merrily Circle. I'd like to ask how you justify calling the fluoridation chemicals "natural" when there are 12 different chemicals being purchased to add to our water? To me, that's not natural. I'd like to also let the people of Salina know that our petition is ready, and we'll be starting February 1st to collect the signatures, to take it to a vote to remove fluoridation from the water. And I'd also like to make a statement that minority communities are highly impacted by fluoride, as they are historically experienced more diabetes and kidney disease than Caucasian people do. And they're harmed more than Caucasian people do from the fluoride in the water, and you need to think about that, not just your agenda here. And I do want to say for the record, I noticed every one of you were very attentive to all those that spoke before me, and I appreciate that. And so would everybody else that's ever spoken this off room to you for you to listen and not be on your tablet. Thank you.
You're specifically talking to me. I use my tablet to verify information that's up here constantly. I'm not emailing or goofing off or doing whatever. I use it to gather information, and that's my prerogative to do it. I'm listening to you the whole time, and we've listened to the fluoride situation for years, and I think we've been more than polite in listening to all your information and disinformation. And, you know, it's my, you know, I'm not omniscient, I don't know everything there is to know out there, so I like having this up here so I can rather quickly and simply verify a lot of the disinformation that comes up here before us. So I'll continue to use it. Sorry you think it's a distraction, but I listen clearly to everything you all said. And if not, I've got plenty of CDs that you sent me, reams of paper information that I could look over if I so wish to, so... Well, I did before I got the, before I got 1,500 pages worth. The first 350 times I probably looked it over, but the last 500 I probably haven't, so...
Best wishes to you. Is there anybody else here for citizen forums? Seeing that, I'll move on to public hearings and either the schedule for a certain time. Madam Clerk?
Item 5.1, "Public Hearing and Report on Petition Number 4362, requesting the vacation of that portion of West Grand Avenue Right-Away that abuts the north line of Lot 2, Block 3 of the North Park Edition, as well as the necessary utility easements as legally described." Item 5.1A, First Reading, Ordinance Number 14-10729.
Mr. Strag?
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. The item on the agenda today is a public hearing to consider a vacation petition filed by the city engineer for vacation of a portion of West Grand Avenue Right-Away. One thing that I want to call to your attention before I proceed to the staff report is you should have at your place a written objection to the proposed ordinance filed by Jeffrey and Joseph Miniman, who are property owners of the adjoining property that would be the subject of the vacation. And pursuant to Kansas State statute, when a written objection is filed, that precludes us from acting on the petition, and I'll defer to the city attorney to answer legal questions or provide additional detail, but it creates the first decision point for us, I believe, and that is, given the fact that the objection has been filed, assuming that it's Mr. Miniman's intention that he doesn't want the vacation ordinance passed, that precludes you from acting on it, and it calls into question the need for the public hearing in the first place. So with your permission, I guess I would pause at that point, suggest that we ask Mr. Miniman if that is his intention, and then you may need to deliberate on whether we wish to proceed with the public hearing at all. If you chose to proceed with the public hearing, at best it would be an opportunity to take comment, but you don't have the discretion to act on the vacation ordinance.
Is Mr. Miniman here? Would you like to come up?
First of all, I looked at the petition.
We'll need you to talk into the mic so everyone at home can hear you. Thank you.
First of all, I looked at the petition. That in and of itself is, we can't have a hearing because the city filed the petition. They're not listening, they're not having a hearing on my original petition that I filed some years, months ago. City didn't own the street. So the petition they filed is, you have no jurisdiction to even do anything today on that petition. That's just a fact.
Mr. Miniman, was it, was it your intent with the filing of the objection to exercise your right under the statute to essentially object in a way that...
I think it's the only way I can get the city's attention by doing that. You know, I tried to get your attention for quite some time, and you people have just called me time and time again, and I've got chewed out by 2 different members of the staff that work for the city. I think I'm a little bit upset about it, you know? I think I have a right to be. So let's get things straight. If you've got jurisdiction, let's proceed. If you don't have jurisdiction, we're not going anywhere. You don't have any jurisdiction on this petition you filed today. You're not the owner. You file all the petitions you want. I'm the only one that can file it. I filed one. You didn't want to hear it. You don't want to hear anything I said. And I know I'm right. You've missed a step in this proceeding to take and change what you did out there on property next to mine. You can widen the street, you can narrow the street, you can lengthen the street, but you can't do away with the street, and you did away with it. It says so right into my petition, and I filed on my objection, and you know it. It says so right into my petition and I filed on my objection and you know it. The ordinance is there, the law's there, fact's in my favor. You want to condemn it, condemn it. Or you want to make an agreement with me, we'll make an agreement. That's what you've got to do and you have not even listened to it. So let's not proceed. Your petition is clearly in there. You don't own the street.
Mayor and Commissioners, I've spent a fair amount of time working with Mr. Miniman, not nearly as much as Mr. Schrag has. This is generally the way the conversation goes. And I would be glad to take it from the top. I'm sure Mr. Schrag would be glad to take it from the top. I don't know that you want to necessarily have to sit and listen to all that, but we can proceed as, as you wish. Now, the dilemma we have is that the, the objection has been filed and the statute simply says, "The petition shall not be granted if a written objection thereto is filed with a city clerk at the time of or before the hearing by any owner, any owner or adjoining owner who would be a proper party to the petition but has not joined therein." That is the circumstance we have, I would say, that there is, there's no way that the petition, as presented to you, can go forward in the face of that objection. So the right-of-way stands as it stands, what I believe city staff understood to be an effort to address Mr. Miniman's concerns. The matter is relatively simple. In the North Broadway project, the intersection of Grand and North Broadway was realigned to, from a safety standpoint, to take it from an angular intersection to a perpendicular intersection. As a result, there was a realignment of the street. The point that we understood Mr. Miniman to be making was that, well, you realigned the street in the right-of-way and therefore you don't need all of that remaining right-of-way. Now, there are utilities remaining in that area and frankly, the petition that's before you is quite simply to address the point that Mr. Miniman makes. There's not a street on that right-of-way anymore. Is it necessary to continue to have right-of-way or does a retained easement suffice? And in staff analysis, it seemed reasonable to look at a vacation of the right-of-way, except to the extent, and this is up to the commission, as to whether there's any anticipated ongoing use of that right-of-way. We understood that there was the potential desire to develop at least that portion of the right-of-way nearest to North Broadway, potentially for some landscaping improvements ultimately, and that is certainly the prerogative of the, of the commission. But the, the effort with the petition was simply to recognize Mr. Miniman's point that the street no longer continues on a straight east-west orientation and that the public interest can be met by retained easement in that area and allowed for the vacation of a segment of the right-of-way. And that is what brought us here today. But as I say, with the objection, I don't believe we can go forward.
And I definitely understand where we're at there and it seems to make, I mean, it's the purpose, the purpose, the legal step. So my thoughts are, as before this objection came up, our thoughts were, hey, that's fine. We're happy to give you back the land if you so want. We may maintain a part of it for potential future landscape, but we retain the easement through there. You're not going to build anything on top of it. So if you want to pay us taxes for the corner lot and we still maintain the easement, we were fine with that? I mean, is that kind of just?
If I may, I'm probably better in position to answer that question, but I think there are some, there's an underlying disagreement about some legal principles related to right-of-way and those type of issues. I initiated the vacation request in hopes that the end result would be, would accomplish what we were trying to accomplish. Mr. Miniman and I've had hours of conversation about surveys, boundary, legal principles and weren't able to reach an agreement that we could mutually proceed forward with a vacation request. My, my original goal was, as Mr. Miniman indicated, to revisit his vacation request if we could reach some agreement of the area to be vacated. That wasn't successful. In an effort to bring the issue to a head, I initiated this vacation request. But what I would say is, if we aren't able to meet, have a meeting of the minds or have agreement on the underlying legal principles, those are, that is not an issue that we are, have been able to successfully resolve with Mr. Miniman and I don't believe that it's something that you're in a position to render a legal opinion.
May I interject here? I think you were right when you said, "Why would I want it if it's, all I'm going to do is get to mow it," which we've been doing, we've been good stewards, we've took in, took care of the property, and I'm not going to be able to get any economic value out of it? Why would I want it? I want it for the economic value, which is there and which I'm entitled to. You people missed the procedural step. Before you took and amended the plat, and they don't want to agree with that, you amended the plat. The plat sets as filed back in 1861 or whatever it was, all three of those plats, Casa Loma, North Park, Pacific. They set as you have adopted them by the city some time ago. You, you didn't do it, but the city did at one time. And I've got a right to rely on that plat. If you want to change it, then you file, you get an agreement with me, or you condemn my interest. It's that simple. And that's what they don't want to accept. And that is the law. And those are the facts. I don't want to get that thing if all I got to do is get on the tax roll and pay some extra tax. What is that going to do to me? My brother and I, we've been mowing the yard out there, taking care of it. It's not doing anybody any good the way it is, unless, unless you just want to turn it into a park. Apparently, I've got the impression that some people would like to, I don't know, but I'm not going to maintain a park for you. You know what I mean? So they filed this petition. You have no jurisdiction. They're not the landowner. I am. And my name is not on that petition. So we're, we're a standstill today.
If we, again, since this is the next, since he's filed this petition, we can't act on it legally, then what becomes the next step?
Right.
I guess would be probably a logical question.
It's, well, if I may, by statute, we do have jurisdiction to initiate the action. Mr. Miniman had, was in a position?
Not this petition, Counselor.
Yes, sir, Mr. Miniman.
Your petition says owners. Go ahead, I'm sorry, I didn't interrupt you. Go ahead.
The jurisdiction, we had jurisdiction on the basis of Mr. Miniman's petition. We had jurisdiction today. Mr. Miniman and I disagree on that apparently. I believe we do. It's rendered somewhat academic in that, let's assume that we do have jurisdiction. The objection essentially renders any further proceeding academic because you cannot grant the vacation in the face of the objection.
Right.
Or if you assume that Mr. Miniman is correct and that the petition fails for lack of jurisdiction, then it's basically the same outcome. I think we have the same outcome under either interpretation. So that is, that pretty well resolves the matter and the, the right-of-way stands as it now exists.
No, the right-of-way don't stand. You get my back to my petition. I didn't have a hearing on my petition. You didn't follow the procedure for notice requirements. Check with Mr. Schrag.
May I ask, what the, the April 16th, 2012 hearing, was that, was that, what, did you file for that meeting or?
And I had no notice of the hearing and that's, I got to have a notice. That's just part of the procedure and the way due process works. I never got one.
Yes, he filed that petition and published notice was made as required by statute. Mailed notice was mailed to the two addresses on the petition, which are Salina addresses. Mr. Miniman was not provided mailed notice to his residence in Illinois. And he raised that point. We had a conversation collectively about proceeding with revisiting the request for vacation and we've had, I would estimate 20, Mr. Miniman and I've had, I would estimate 20 hours of conversation since then trying to bring it to this point.
So would it be, would it be somewhat, would I be right in assuming then that all the due process and all the proper procedures were followed and that, and that the vote that was taken by the commission on April 12, April 16, 2012 was all in order? Would that be correct?
It was certainly in order as the facts were known at that time. Now, there isn't a statutory requirement of mailed notice, but certainly there was an attempt to make mailed notice and as Mr. Schrag described.
Well, it seems to me that the effort that has taken place since this has been to accommodate another chance at having this, this heard and, and without, without knowing what the full contents of all the meetings were, it seems like the basis for even having those meetings together was to try to resolve some of that.
May I say something? That was attempted. I told or asked Mr. Schrag, I says, "Send me a copy of the proposed ordinance you want to present today to the council and we can go over and if it needs tweak to take and look out for the city's interests as well as mine, let's do that." Can't do that. Nope. Told me I couldn't do it. Here's the proposed ordinance, kind of take it to leave that basis. So I filed the objections.
Well, we, just for.
If I may clarify, Mr. Miniman, we, we were attempting to reach some agreement on how to proceed. That was not successful. The point that I made with you at the time that you asked to jointly draft the ordinance was, our past dealings were indicative that that was not going to be successful. What I suggested to you is that I would be prepared to draft an ordinance and provide it to you in advance, which I did, and you would have the opportunity to address the city commission directly with any concerns that you had, rather than you and I investing another 20 hours trying to come to an agreement that was likely not going to be successful.
And that's what I've done. I've objected to it. So we're a standstill. I'd like to get some resolved. I came here to resolve something.
Yeah, maybe I could just, we can just remove the heat from you all. If I'm not mistaken, the five commissioners that were up here, maybe three of us and the two previous, I don't believe it was Commissioner Blanchard.
I'd be correct.
And Commissioner Hardy, we expressed that we had no desire to give up that property anyway, that we had potential future plans for landscaping, probably not a park in that small area, but some, some form of future landscaping. Did that not render the city's position clear enough for you all or do we need to restate that position that we have no desire? I mean, that's fine, I understand why you wrote this up. I understand that. But are we restating that clearness issue and?
If I may, and others are certainly welcome to correct me, but I tried to identify in the staff report the likely considerations that the city commission took into account at that time. And Mr. Miniman, after that hearing, made the point that some of those may not be completely applicable. One of those being concerned that he intended to build on the property and he indicated that wasn't the case. Another one of those being our recognition that there were utilities under the property and so we somewhat reached the conclusion that vacating it had very little purpose if the bulk of, well, if all of it was going to be retained as utility easement. Previously, Mr. Miniman indicated to me that even though there was a recognition that there were utilities there, he wanted us to proceed with right-of-way vacation because utility easements are a lesser right or a lesser position than a right-of-way. And so essentially, from my vantage point, I was trying to accommodate that by vacating it and retaining utility easements. So I think, you know, trying to take into account Mr. Miniman's concerns, this seemed like an avenue to accommodate him, retain what we are able to retain in the form that we should retain it, rather than retain right-of-way when it may not need to be right-of-way.
Mr. Miniman?
I don't, I don't think you've got that question. Go ahead, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Did you happen to read the, the agenda item? Do you have access to that? I mean, it's, it's published and it's on public record on, what is it, Thursday, is it 5 o'clock, it goes public?
It was mailed to him not last Friday, but the Friday before.
Okay, because I got to tell you, I'm a little bit confused as to why the, the solution that Mr. Schrag has come up with isn't pretty much what you're asking. With the possible exception of, you seem to have the argument that the city doesn't own the right-of-way.
They don't own the, they don't own the street. You have no deed to the street period.
Then I think that probably your objection is probably the, is probably the net effect of getting, coming to an agreement anyways, because I don't think you're ever going to come to an agreement on that.
Initially, when I started this, I pointed out to them that as the owner of Lot 2, which runs right next to Grand Avenue between 13th and Broadway, my part, my property is right next to, connects to it. Now, under existing law in this state, and I pointed that out in my objection on number three item, you know, I have a right to use the street out there with, along with the public. The city has a right to control it, they can pave it, they can extend it, they can widen it, they can put curb and guttering in it, they can put streetlights on it, they can put arrows backwards and backwards, sideways, parking spaces, whatever you want. But you can't change the plat because that street stayed there. You changed the plat because you changed the angle of the street and you closed off 13th and Grand. It's that simple. And they don't want to accept the fact, and in this exhibit I gave you, if you look at one, page three, what does it say there? It says you abandoned the property. If you abandon it, it's mine. It reverts to me. I'm the abutting landowner. Simple. And they don't want to accept that back.
The abandonment of the land or abandonment of the, of just the road?
Well, the point that I would make is we've moved from a vacation request to a legal assertion and we've yet to be able to reach agreement on that. This isn't the form to do that. A vacation, the vacation request was my best attempt to do what we could.
Well, and the thing, the thing about this and Mr. Miniman, your point, we don't disagree that your lot has the reversionary interest.
Yeah, I get the whole street that you took and you took and you don't let the pavement.
It was platted such that it, it reverts to the subdivision in which your lot is located.
Reversing the abutting landowners.
And there's no, that, I don't believe, I don't think there's disagreement on that point. What, what you have is the distinction between the street improvements and the right-of-way. Those are, those are two very different things. And that, that right-of-way can be used for the public benefit in a, in multiple ways, the street being the predominant one, of course. But certainly, and what the petition proposes to do is to vacate the right-of-way as was proposed, now leaving the, what would be, I guess, the northeasternmost corner there, potentially for landscape improvements along Broadway. But the bulk of the remaining right-of-way, from which the street improvements have been redirected, we are saying, if vacated, reverts to your lot. Now, we would, I think, have reason to all have the public wondering what we were doing if we left those utilities stranded on Mr. Miniman's property. The retention of the permanent utility easement is simply the means of, that's the, that's the minimum level of retained rights that enables the continued access to those utilities. So there's no question but what the underlying fee title reverts to you, your lot. It's just that surface right represented by the easement that the city, I think, has to retain or it leaves those utilities unserviceable. So I don't know that we disagree on the legal consequence of the vacation.
I'm not even sure that street's a city street. I think it was township or county road that was in there when the plat was filed way back in the 1800s because it's 100 feet wide and all the streets within the plats out there, some of them are what, 70 feet wide, some are 80. Most of them are 70. And the ones in front of my property at 623, my reversionary interest is only 15 feet into the middle of the street. On the Grand Avenue reversionary, it just takes the whole street because.
The way it was originally platted.
And I, and the other thing is, I have a right of access. I have two legal rights to access Grand Avenue. I have the right that the public has, that's a given, I guess, from everybody that I've heard talk so far. And the other one I pointed out in my objection is, I have certain private rights, which is to keep my access to Grand. to keep my access to Grand Avenue and it is not there anymore because you changed the street, you changed the plat.
Well, Mr. Miniman-
You say you didn't change the plat.
The, well, this, this, this action does not require an amendment of the plat. We're, we're following the vacation statute that enables us to take this action. There's, there's no question, we may have to disagree or agree to disagree about that, but-
Go ahead, go ahead.
This is the process, and you mentioned the county, it is a little bit confusing because it hasn't been too many years ago, well, thirty maybe now, that this proceeding would have been before the county commissioners. Uh, I mean, they retained that role until, uh, not so many years ago. But statutorily, twelve five oh four was amended, so that this proceeding is appropriately considered by the city commission. Now, Mr. Miniman and I disagree a little bit as to the nature of the access right. I think we have to agree to disagree on that.
I, I'll go along with what the plat says. Plat says you can make the street out there and maintain it for me.
No.
Now you don't want to maintain the street, you don't want to vacate it and, and change the plat and put in a new street. You did, it's already there.
But the other thing we do need to, I think, acknowledge here is that, uh, and I'll look to, I think Dan is still, uh, over there on the other side of the podium, even with this reconfiguration, even with the retained utility easement, uh, there is the capability of accessing West Grand over that retained, well, partially retained easement and partially retained right-of-way, if you were so inclined to want to construct a drive traversing that area. Am I incorrect?
You're incorrect.
How am I incorrect? I was asking-
What did I have initially to begin?
Ma'am, I was asking the city engineer, I was not asking you, Mr. Miniman, I'm sorry. Am I correct? Uh, so, even though Mr. Miniman and I disagree on the particulars of Kansas law relative to the access and his, his right of access and how it is subject to the city's ability to regulate traffic in the interest of safety, um, and we have, I mean, it's the Fricke case. We have, we have the Fricke, we're the other party on that case that is the latest law in Kansas on this access question. Um, I don't believe there's a taking and certainly with the ability to construct a drive, if you were so inclined, I, I don't know how anyone could suggest that your access is impaired. You have, I mean, you've got access to Thirteenth, you've got access to Grand. I don't understand the basis of-
That's not the point, Mr. Binksen, you know it. The point is, if I build a driveway across property that's not in my name, I'm trespassing the last time I checked.
Well, no, we're, we're, I have a city engineer-
And I don't know what you did on Thirteenth Street where you let the glass company access the new Grand Avenue. I don't know what you did there, but I got, I got a feeling he's got the same problem I got here, if you really ask him.
The driveway across the street, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, he had a drive. That drive-
He had a drive to Thirteenth Street. He didn't have a drive to the new Grand Avenue that you made. Come on, get real. It ain't there.
He had, was-
You changed the plat. You changed my access to Grand Avenue. That's a given. I don't have access to Grand Avenue right between Thirteenth and Broadway. I don't have full access. If I had full access, I could have got you people to make me a survey saying, hey, we'll give you this property to the middle of Grand Avenue and I would agree to that. And if you ever want to change it and abandon it like you have, it reverts back to me. The statute says I get a reversionary interest. It's right there. Anytime you do something to my property, you don't want to use it, it reverts to me. You don't want to use the old Grand Avenue. You took it, you abandoned it. It's right here. I don't get it.
Mr. Miniman, we mapped your reversionary interest for you and they extended beyond the center line of the real.
We'll, we'll take, take my, and go through my, uh, exhibit here and then go through the attachment that I got as far as your new road goes. And the other thing today I asked for were the con, contract documents as to how this thing was going to be constructed. I want to know what went into the ground because you keep talking about retained easement. An easement means that's a personal right that the predecessor or me entitled gave you. You don't just go ahead and take an easement from me. That's government action. You can't do that. Last time I checked.
Mr. Miniman, you need to read KSA twelve five oh three, four through five oh six.
Really?
And it will explain, it will explain how it is that when considering a petition to vacate right-of-way, is incumbent upon this body to determine whether the public interest is served by the retention of utility easements. That's exactly what is, that was exactly what was proposed today.
And you gotta have jurisdiction. I'm the only one that can take and file a petition. I'm the landowner and you're not. You don't get it.
That's in twelve, that's in twelve five oh four also.
They don't say you're a landowner. Say you're a landowner, say see the landowner.
It says the city made petition for the vacation of-
But I've got to join in that petition.
And that's why, because, well, you don't have to-
I'm not joining that petition on this proposed ordinance.
Mr. Miniman, you're misstating-
No, I'm not.
The statute.
No, I'm not.
The city can initiate the petition. If you, as a potential party to that, you are a potential party to that petition and as a potential party, you have asserted your objection to the city doing what we thought you wanted the city to do.
No, no.
And as a result, we, you're right, we can't go forward based on the objection.
And let me ask, let me, let me add something here. His, his thing about five oh four and five oh five, the city engineer may file a vacation on any street to widen it, lengthen it, vacate it. He can do that because you got jurisdiction over the existing plat. You don't have any jurisdiction now with the plat because you changed it. Simple. You changed the plat. You changed both plats.
Excuse me, Madam Mayor, I think, uh, just, uh, from the words of council that we're really not going to be able to make any, uh, any judgment on this. I think we're really not getting very far on this thing and I would just-
I don't think it's even at a commission point at this stage.
I don't think so either.
Yeah, with the filing of this, that killed us dead in the water anyway, so.
We would just revert back to where we were. And what is the prospect then of ever hearing about this again?
Well, my- Commissioners, I, I would defer to Greg, but obviously with, again, with the objection, the statute says shall, shall not consider, so you can't consider it. I would think that at any point in the future, uh, the city could initiate a petition, again, if we should choose, want to, I'm not sure what the interest would be in doing that. I would think that Mr. Miniman could also provide you with a petition at some point in future if he should choose. Uh, for that question to Mr. Binksen, I don't know if there's a, a time aspect to that. I, I'm not sure that there is, but if there is, we obviously need to be honoring that. I don't know that there is. So that's how you would get it back. Uh, and without your direction, I wouldn't see us bringing it back to you, given we'd anticipate an objection.
Could this go be, would this be better suited for a court rather than a commission?
Well, it's a good question. You know, we, yeah, far be it from us to say sue us. Uh, we, quite honestly, we don't-
I always say that.
We don't believe that's a good use of your-
Sure money, one way or another.
For public dollars, but-
Yes.
There's, there's a point in time on an issue, if there's a legal disagreement, um, and we believe that we're correct and the other party believes that they are correct, and we do not believe that that legal disagreement will ever get resolved, um, based on conferring among, or between the two parties, the only other recourse is to see how a judge would look at that situation, how a court would look at that situation. So that may be the only recourse left to, uh, address the matter, but-
Since there's utilities there, doesn't that have to be, at some point, have to be determined? I mean-
Yeah, just, I don't want to try to rehash too much, but generally speaking, uh, as, as Mr. Binksen mentioned, we believe that the city has the right to vacation and that simply moving the road within the same area of right-of-way does not in essence create any form of vacation. That vacation action has to come from you, um, that you have the full authority to retain easement for the existing utilities and that those are rights that are superior to the underlying, underlying private property owners' rights. That's the difference.
So this strikes me a little bit like the Ohio overpass. We ended up with small little bits of properties in a similar situation. We still maintain ownership of this for potential fu, future uses, is that?
In this particular case, there was no acquisition of private property. This is simply a reuse of the existing right-of-way space.
So if, if we were to tell you to take your ten thousand dollar discretionary, uh, city manager income and go put some trees up and assign welcome to North Salina, we could be done with this?
You'd get them, you'd get them torn down pretty quick if that property reverts to be by statute. And that's the problem you got.
Well, and we're not disagreeing about that. I, I don't mean to rehash it.
He just told me I, I couldn't do anything with it. He's trying to tell the council I can't do anything with it. Heck, I can. I can go out there and kick you off of it right now.
What's the filing date of-
Well, you can't. I, I wouldn't see us doing that.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna take and mow the grass just to be a good neighbor anymore and be a good steward of the property and not get anything in return for your illegal actions. You missed a step in procedure. That was, you needed to condemn my interest or get an agreement instead of going ahead with what you did with the construction of going through that triangle.
Mr. Miniman, you, Mr. Miniman-
That's period.
That property was in right-of-way.
Which was? What property?
Grand Avenue. I mean, we're talking about an abandoned right-of-way. There, there was no taking on this. There was no, nobody took, used any of your property.
You're taking my legal interest and messing with it. That's what they don't want to accept. My legal interests are one I want protected. And law says I got a right to protection, two of them.
Did you make, did you make that, uh, complaint at the time when the, when the road project was happening or?
Do what?
At the time that the, that the construction was happening and all this, this is, I don't, I think that you brought this up in two thousand and twelve, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't think it's my duty to come forward and say, you've got to come to me.
You say, you say it was your legal interest, but you weren't looking out for your legal interest at the time that this road construction project was taking place. I mean, it was all public record that, that road that went through was right-of-way. You say you had a legal interest to it, but you didn't own it. But my question was just simply, did you file any sort of protest at that time saying that, hey, look, this is, this is my property, you know, I have legal rights to this, as you're saying? And so my, my question is, is that what, that was right-of-way, it wasn't your property. And you're, and yet you're saying that the city doesn't own the right-of-way or doesn't-
I don't say they didn't have controls. Control, different between control and ownership. You got control. You don't have ownership of anything in that middle of that street or even anything within the, within the plats. You don't have ownership. You don't have ownership of the underlying ground. You have control of the, the streets that you accepted to control.
Well, I get semantics here, I mean-
That's not semantics, that's law.
Madam Mayor, can we, can we do whatever we can-
At what point can I move on to other public comment because this is getting very repetitive and it's, it's going, it's going nowhere.
I, I, the only thing I can say in closing is I filed an objection of the proposed ordinance. The proposed ordinance, I feel, is still before the council. You want to get it amended? You want to come to an agreement as to what should be done? When we can come to something, then let's move forward and have the council approve it, but not before. But we can't. That's right. That's how I approve. And you either condemn it or you get my approval. And you ain't got either one. Never have either.
Well, well, there's, is it fair to say there are, there's two issues being discussed here? And I'll try to wrap this up. There's, there's two things going on. There is the, the vacation of the right-of-way question and there is the access question. But they're different questions. Is that a-
My questions have priority. I didn't have to, you should have given me notice when you wanted to change the street. Did you come out and talk to me? Did you talk to us landowners and say, hey, we're gonna do this? How's this gonna affect your property interest that you have as a private owner and paying taxes on it? I don't recall that, and he's made that point, that I should have come forward. No, you're the one who proposed this.
My, my point was is that all of this is done in, all of these processes are done in public. You get public notices, you get public, there, there are notices put in the paper if you're an adjacent property owner, I'm sure you got mailed a notice at the time that, as the property owner, at, at the time that this project was taking place and, and that was my point. My point is that these don't, these aren't backroom deals. These are deals that happen in public and so the fact that somebody didn't come out and ask you what you thought, that doesn't really bear any weight here because it, if it's your interest and your property, you should take the initiative to find out how it might impact you. I mean, it, it would be very difficult if, to do any project around here and, and go ask each individual property owner what they thought about it.
Okay, let's accept your argument.
You know what, I don't, I don't want to have an argument with you there.
No, 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 let's accept what, accept what you're saying, accept what you're saying.
You know, listen, I think we've been very patient here. Nobody here wants to get into the argument with you.
I'm not getting it.
I, I read this thing over the weekend. I had to pull it out.
You didn't, you didn't read my, you didn't read that.
I didn't get yours till this afternoon. You didn't file it until, uh, three forty or two thirty-two, which we were in a meeting already at two o'clock. So, but I tell you what I did, I got this on Thursday, I believe I read it Friday, and I revisited it over the weekend. The, the packet information that, on the, on the vacation of the right-of-way, and, and I was looking through here, I'll be honest with you, I'm trying to figure, well, geez, okay, staff recommends option number one. Uh, the applicant ought to be pleased with that, he's getting what he wants. But apparently, uh-
I'm getting what I want?
You're not.
I'm getting what I want?
Okay, Mr. Binksen, yeah, Mr. Binksen, again, how can we move on, move forward with this? Because again, it's getting, it's very repetitive in nature.
What I'm saying, can I just say one last thing about your notices, public notices? I checked the records, the city for their actions and I found nothing on file about giving taxpayers notice if they were gonna come out and take my property. I got no notice to take it.
Your ticket property was right-of-way. Oh, I know, your, your interest in something.
Took my legal interest, I got a right to access it.
I've never, I've never seen-
Look it up.
Something like that, so, okay.
Would you like a case study?
I'm not, I, listen, I'm not an attorney. You might be, I'm not.
I'll give you the one that's been held up time and time again.
Neither one of us are attorneys here. Okay.
I can give you the case.
Oh, no, oh, dang it.
Maybe we can go on and see if there's any other public comment on this matter. I think we've had adequate time to discuss this. Thank you.
Do we need any motion to move on or how do we?
Should we table it or?
Well-
Put it on the table?
Tableau, I think it's dead.
I don't think, I don't think you want to do that. You're faced with, uh, the objection and Mr. Miniman's suggestion that you didn't have jurisdiction in the first place. While that is not, uh, our position, certainly in the face of the objection, uh, the petition dies. And, uh, I think the record should simply reflect that the petition, in the face of the statutory objection, dies.
Well, what's your proposal then? That you address your proposed ordinance, that's why we had it on the agenda today that we were gonna address it and like an objection. I objected.
Well, and the result of the objection, Mr. Miniman, is, has a legal consequence and the legal consequence is we cannot go forward. And if that was filed as a, as a means of leveraging negotiations, then-
No, it, it was an address of a petition, that's right in there. Read it. It's pretty clear to me. You didn't give me a petition and I, you walked in the door here and handed me a petition that says you were the landowner.
Commissioners, uh, we have two options again, as we mentioned. Either Mr. Miniman can file a petition at some point in the future, um, we can do that as well, I guess that's a third option, or Mr. Miniman can ask a court to, uh, look at the issue if that's his choice to do that. I don't see anything left with this issue this evening.
So do you need a formal motion from us that just, that just naturally dies by legal precedent?
It would, I suppose it would be appropriate to acknowledge the receipt of the objection, the timely objection and-
Would I need to close the public hearing first?
Acknowledgement, acknowledgement of the legal effect of, of that objection.
Do you think just having the mayor, uh, make reference acknowledging the receipt then?
That would be fine.
Can, can we make an amendment to that and send, with the right to reinstate, if we can come to some kind of agreement that makes sense to everybody?
I'm not opening that can of worms.
You're, you're not in a position to.
We're open legally.
Statutory, Commissioners, it doesn't appear that there's any opportunity to put a contingency on that. It says shall.
Right.
The acknowledgements just to set the record.
With all due respect to Mr. Miniman, uh, and this is certainly more in, uh, Mr. Gage's and Mr. Skreg's, uh, domain than mine. But I do think it would be helpful to have some direction from the commission as to whether there is any expectation of further entertainment of negotiations with Mr. Miniman. I would recommend not.
Yeah, I, I would say that the efforts have been made. I mean, it sure seems like it. And I think there just does come a point when, when both sides just simply don't agree. And it's not that we're obviously not willing. I heard statements of 20 hours, and I can imagine we've spent more time on this today than, than it would be. So I would think any future.
As I say, Mr. Gage's perception on that is more important than mine, but that would be one thought.
Yeah, the, the conversation that, uh, you participated in this afternoon, this evening, is the same one that's been, had more, uh, really more time than I can probably count. I, I agree. I don't think there's any negotiation left. I, I do believe though, obviously, that if Mr. Miniman does want to file a petition with us, he's certainly legally entitled to do that. And then we will present that to you at the time.
I'm gonna go out and dig it up. I'm gonna farm it.
Please, just looking at, from the, Madam Mayor, I think this.
It reverted to me and you already admitted that.
From the, uh, objection to proposing ordinance.
Do I need to close the public hearing first before we make that motion?
I'm sorry, Mayor. Mr. Miniman just made a statement that I simply feel compelled to respond to.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear it.
You want to repeat it, Mr. Miniman?
The property you admitted reverts to me means I can do anything with it within Grand Avenue in the middle of 13th Street where it intersects. And anything other than that, then I can't do anything with it. Mostly according to you, even though I've got a legal right of access to Grand Avenue.
Yeah, you, those access rights are there. But the, the thing we need to make absolutely clear, Mr. Miniman, before we leave, is that the effort to vacate that right-of-way and preserve the necessary easement was undertaken, presented to this governing body, and terminated by your action. So there is no reversion, there is no reversion. And if you, if you in any way act contrary to the public interest on that right-of-way, there will.
Right-of-way. You abandoned it. It's got there right in the, in the document. It says abandoned. Abandoned where I come from. You walked away from it. You're gonna say you didn't walk away from it? Let's put that one up to public vote.
There are utilities.
You're not that smart, are you?
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing now. Thank you, Mr. Miniman. I think you've had ample time up here to discuss the matter.
I'm sorry, ma'am, what was that?
Thank you.
I didn't hear that.
You've had ample time to discuss the matter. Public hearing is closed on this matter. Thank you.
You decided anything on the proposed.
Okay, we're finished. Recognizing the, the sugge, I mean, not even the suggestion. I think I could have come to the conclusion myself that I don't really want city staff spending more time on trying to do this. I think you came up with, I think, is a reasonable plan. I think you looked out for the city's best interests and what you guys are paid to do. You advised us clearly on what you felt that interest was. I'm, I'm never a fan of giving up property that we potentially have future use for. We've discussed future uses. One commission was a 5-0 vote saying we have potential plans for this. Uh, I wouldn't want to see you spend more time on this. And again, I think if the mayor just acknowledges, as you said, that she accepted this, then we can move on.
Where does the taxpayer come in on that statement?
Again, this was, uh, closed now. Thank you.
Where does the taxpayer come in on that statement, Counselor?
I agree, I agree with Commissioner Householder on, I think that, uh, we've spent enough staff time on this issue, and then it's time to move on.
Mr. Miniman, the mayor has asked you to step down. I'm going to encourage you to do that.
You chewed me out the other day. You don't want to do that again.
I'm going to encourage you to sit down, please.
I, I would concur with, with both of your comments.
And I'll go ahead and defer to Mr. Banks one last time. Since we have the public hearing closed, what is our next move?
I do think it would be helpful to acknowledge, uh, the receipt of the, the timely receipt of the objection. And that the consequence of that is, um, the matter cannot go forward. And, uh, the legal effect is that the petition dies, uh, and.
Mr. Blanchard, did you want to move on with that?
I think you just acknowledged it. You just say.
As long as that's on the record, I think that's all we need to do.
I want to put something to record. I think one last time. I thought we was here, I thought we was here to discern the facts of this matter.
You need to request permission from the mayor to speak, Mr. Miniman.
Okay, I do acknowledge the objection to the proposed ordinance, uh, number 14-10729. And, uh, I guess it's motion dies, or matter dies?
To make clear, the, the legal effect of the filing of the objection is addressed in KSA 12505. And it simply provides that the petition shall not be granted. Get a written objection there to apply with the city clerk at the time or before the hearing by any owner or adjoining owner who would be a proper party to the petition but has not joined therein. That is the circumstance we have here. And any further proceeding would be entirely academic, because you cannot grant the petition, the relief sought by the petition.
Right. We cannot grant the relief sought by the petitioner. Is there anything else?
Just acknowledge that.
Just acknowledge that. Okay. On to consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approved amendments of January 13th, 2014. Item 6.2, resolution number 14-7075, authorizing treasury management services at Sunflower Bank. Item 6.3, authorize the purchase of one fairway reel mower and the execution of a lease purchase agreement with Kansas State Bank, Manhattan. Item 6.4, resolution number 14-7076, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with Kansas Department of Transportation for safe schools, safe routes to school funding for a trail at Lakewood Middle School. Item 6.5, resolution number 14-7074, authorizing the mayor to submit an application to the Kansas Department of Transportation for transportation alternatives program funds. Item 6.6, resolution number 14-7077, amending the City of Salina shared vision statement and strategic plan. And item 6.7, authorize the city manager to approve the direct purchase of two-use passenger vans for the fire department.
Is there anything that a commissioner would like removed or amended from the consent agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor, um, I'd like to suggest that we move, uh, or I would like to move, uh, item number six to our regular agenda. The shared vision.
And I don't, I don't have an amendment, but I would like to make a comment on item 6.7, uh, after the vote.
Add a motion to move item 6.6 onto the agenda?
I don't think it requires a motion. I think it's automatic. I think we're good.
Mr. Gage?
Yeah, I, I'd make a motion to, uh, approve the consent agenda with the, uh, remaining items.
And then.
Second. My, my only comment, uh, was on the, uh, the purchase of the vans by Chief Muliken. This is the second time since I've been on the commission that Chief Muliken has gone outside the box to, uh, purchase vehicles at substantial savings to the City of Salina. And I applaud him for, uh, thinking that way and for, uh, and for keeping the best, uh, what's good for, for the City of Salina in the back of his head and the decisions that he makes. And I applaud that. And, uh, you know, I think he's a good example for the rest of the city.
Good job. And I did have a motion in the second on the consent agenda. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5-0. We'll go ahead and go on to item 6.6. Mr. Gage?
Yes, Commissioners, would you like me to kind of go through the changes for the public's awareness?
Yeah, that way everyone knows.
Most of the changes pretty much, um, I would say reflect a lot of the initiatives in here, but they're a little bit more specific. And so I'll start with the first goal, which is the city will create a community of mixed-use quality development and redevelopment. Uh, based on the strategic planning discussions, there is an addition. Uh, determine the most effective approach to local economic gardening and to retaining, growing, and recruiting quality and premier-level jobs with a focus on higher-level technical knowledge. So that's an economic development-related one that was added. That demonstrates your emphasis, I believe, towards economic development. Um, on the second goal, the city will create a uniformly managed, and I'm gonna paraphrase this one. It's a goal related to Pinewood Oakdale Park and managing and master-planning it. Um, we, uh, have struck out, review and fully implement a sound business and operation plan for the bicentennial center, because that goal's been accomplished with the contracting with Global Spectrum. And part of what they do is provide that to you annually. So we feel like we have that one accomplished. With regards to, um, skip up here. The city will maintain growth and development policies that are updated to reflect current conditions and desired growth direction. The next goal, update the current comprehensive plan. The update of that has been completed, struck out. Uh, we do have some implementation aspects left to do. Um, we added, ensure that development codes are reviewed routinely and reasonably adapted to accommodate aging and historical structures. That was an emphasis when we recognized that current codes don't always fit well with older structures. And we've seen recently with the demolition, and not saying that was code-related, but how difficult it is and how, that, a lot of times the market is, is very low with regards to demand for those structures. So any way we can help with that, we will. So we'll, we had taken a look at that sometime in the past. And we'll take a look at giving you something that you can approve at some point in the future. We had to promote the growth of all post-secondary educational institutions. Um, I think there was agreement that, uh, those colleges in our community are, are, uh, growth engines for our community. They also help us, uh, bring in and retain, uh, younger persons and diversify our demographics. Uh, and in, in addition, provide, uh, labor for our community. Uh, complete a housing needs assessment, determine what policies, incentives, or other actions are necessary to improve the condition of housing and infrastructure, actively address and abate nuisances, and determine redevelopment opportunities within the comprehensive plan designated area of change. It's a pretty comprehensive one about neighborhoods. And then we, I did supplement under, uh, the goal that was existing. Establish updated economic goals for the Salina Area Chamber of Commerce Agreement. And I added to that for you for your consideration for 2014 and determine the most effective approach to economic development for the future. That was a goal, in essence, that was provided at budget time when you talked about structure. I believe that's still active today, and so felt that was a, a good compliment. The next goal, uh, that had to change is the city will maintain a commitment to making downtown Salina a vibrant economic and social center of the community. And, uh, this was, uh, one that was important to you that says, apply a look downtown first approach to reviewing all relevant development opportunities that properly fit the venue and have the impact of providing long-term economic stability or growth. So it's a look first. Always try to see if there's a fit there first. That was actually in the, uh, comprehensive plan prior to this one. I think it, I don't know if it was intentional or not. I don't believe it was. I think it accidentally kind of fell out of the new one, even though there's a lot of emphasis in downtown. And so putting it in the strategic plan really reinforces that. The next goal, the city will work to make Salina a city that has connectivity physically and socially. We have, uh, construct interstate gateway and entryway markers that communicate Salina's brand and the message of community pride and progressiveness. That's, uh, I wanted to be sure in there that, that reflects your intention, which is if somebody sees that, there's an image in their mind, and, and that's what it is. Uh, we added, to fully support public access to information, this is really a housekeeping item. It says, and government transparency of operations. The, the word transparency is pretty commonly known with regards to openness in government. So I just felt that was a complimentary item. Um, we, we struck, encourage the participation of youth on municipal boards and committees, two members per applicable board, to include full participation in non-binding, uh, voting responsibilities. We, we've done that. We are doing that. So we've accomplished that goal. Uh, we, we added to commit to encouraging and participating in open citizen community engagement. That was a goal you had, but we went further with where you'd like to go, which is to add utilizing adequate staff resources to effectively develop an engagement strategy, utilizing internet, social media, and engagement tools, applying other broad community engagement methods, and the development of neighborhoods is directed by the city's comprehensive plan. The more we looked at that, the comp plan really lays out that direction, and the resources aren't really there to do that. And so it's a combination of that personal contact, of use of technology, and so forth. So we have that in there for you. And because of that, being that it complements that one, we didn't need to be redundant. So the explore, the use of social media to enhance communication with residents and others can be struck, uh, stricken, because we already have it in there. And then we also struck, consider commencing a broad-based community outreach and goal-setting project similar to goals for Salina. In essence, we tried to do that with the, uh, meetings that we held, fitting up to the capital improvement planning that you'll have in the budgeting in general, the strategic planning. Uh, I think that's an ongoing goal, and that's part of the overall engage, citizen engagement process. So I think we've really covered it all on that one. If that works for you. Uh, the next goal, the city will recognize the importance of a healthy community and its natural resources, and will make practical efforts to preserve them. We added, ensure the quality of the public water supply is of the highest quality and adequately conserved for current and future needs. That's something that's always on our mind and really, right there on, on the top of our heads all the time. Something that was important to you. We've added, determine the most effective way to clean out the existing Smoky Hill River Channel to ensure adequate water flow, reduction of future sedimentation, and necessary stormwater storage capacity. This is something that, uh, from a technical perspective, regardless of anyone's thoughts of what a river, uh, project would be, a development project, this is going to have to happen. It's still full of sediment. Uh, we think it could affect our storm detention at this point in time. We don't have information, but, uh, this is really important at this point in time. Um, kind of modified and updated the one that's related to the groundwater contamination and the current efforts, uh, regarding the former Schilling Air Force Base. And it reads, the new version reads, complete the feasibility study, remedial investigation of the groundwater contamination associated with the former Schilling Air Force Base, and finalize efforts with the U.S. Department of Justice, uh, to negotiate a full and complete, uh, remediation. So it just brings it up to date with where we are today. Um, we struck, fully support the initiative of Salina Regional Medical Center to attain a Level 3 trauma center designation. We've done that. They've attained that. So that goal is considered completed, uh, which is really, really good. Those are the changes that we have. Uh, our intention was to take from the consultant report everything that had been listed and properly incorporate that. So if there's anything you'd like to see moved, uh, emphasize in another way or change, please let me know. But, uh, otherwise, uh, that's what we have for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
We do need to inject the word there, it looks like.
Yeah, mine's not.
Under the feasibility remedial, uh, investigation, you left off of where you added during your explanation. It said, uh, Department of Justice to negotiate a full and complete.
Oh, remediation is down lower. You'll look. It's hidden.
It's the first word on the last line of that one.
It took me a little bit there, too.
Yeah, there's, there's words, there are words struck out before and after. But on the very left, the very first word of the bottom line, which is the fifth line of that one, remediation should be there on that copy.
I don't have it online.
Really?
Yeah, it's right here. Section 4, right here. It just goes into remediation. First word, last line, under the complete.
My last line says, in determination, if needed, if additions, deletions, or other modifications are necessary.
That's further down.
The line just above section 4 is the one I'm talking about.
No, yeah, uh, no, that's up, uh, go up to the, complete the feasibility study. The last line of that paragraph, you'll see the word remediation on the left.
I don't see the, oh, I don't see the word.
You see where it says to negotiate a full and complete?
You're looking up there. We're talking about down here.
We're talking at the very last, at the very bottom.
At the very bottom.
The line above section 4.
Are you on the first version or the second or the strikeout?
I'm on the one that's attached to the blue sheet.
There's an original and a strikeout.
Yeah, the strikeout's where we are.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So you're saying it might not have gotten to the original.
Well, whichever one we are proving.
The last one, the, the strikeout.
Let's, let me take a look here.
You'll be the first one.
All right. But thanks for looking so closely. Yeah.
Well, I was wondering, too. I was gonna mention, I might be saying it is.
Do we, do we have two versions of it?
No, it's just the very last page.
Yeah, it's a, it's a, I'd call it a Scrivener's error, but I would say if, if that's the only change to go ahead and approve it, uh, as written with the addition of the word remediation under that item. I, I see now. And strikeout does have it. The other version, it was just inadvertently left off.
Very good.
Any other questions for staff? Any public comment on this matter? I'd bring it back to the commission.
Yeah, I just wanted to, for, uh, make a motion here. Uh, part of, part of my desire to kind of pull this from the amendment and, and thank, uh, Ms. Gage for reading through those and explaining those is that, um, I think a really important one is on the, uh, connectivity physically and socially. And, you know, we had the four groups get together, and there was varying degrees of participation with that. And, and I think that, uh, a couple of things there. One is that certainly appreciate everybody, I think we all do, that kind of came out and participated in that. And, uh, just to let them know that, that we saw all that information. And, uh, Mr. Saunders, uh, presented that to us quite well. And, and so we got a clear picture, I think, of what everybody wanted. And just hopefully with the main, one of the main things in here is to, uh, use social media and so on to maybe help engage people more with technology more than, than we have in the past. Because it seems like a lot of people are, are tuning in that way, and, and with busy schedules, they're able to do that more. So, um, hopefully, if they have an opportunity, especially the people that participated, but, but not just them, everybody in the community, that, that they'll now have a more efficient and direct way to engage and offer suggestions and comments and, and other things that may come up. So I, I think that that's a, I'm glad that that was identified and beefed up. And I think it'll really, uh, as we grow that, it'll pay dividends. And then with that, I, Madam Mayor, I move that we approve resolution number 14-7077, amending the Cities of Salina. dash seven zero seven seven, amending the city's of Solana shared vision statement and strategic plan.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? That motion carries five zero. Onto administration. Item seven point one, second reading, ordinance number fourteen dash one zero seven two six, vacating a ten-foot public utility easement located on Lot Eight, Block Four, Block Four, and the replat of Schiphol Edition Blocks Four and Five and Part of Three in the west ten feet of the thirty-two-foot public utility easement located in Lot Five, Block One of the King Edition, which do not contain any public franchise utilities. Ordinance number fourteen dash one zero seven two six was passed on first reading on January sixth, two thousand and fourteen. Since that time, no comments have been received. Do I have any public comment on this matter? Any questions for staff? I would entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance number fourteen dash seven, I'm sorry, one zero seven two six on second reading.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Could I get a roll call, please? Commissioner Blanchard?
Aye.
Commissioner Crawford?
Aye.
Commissioner Hardy?
Aye.
Commissioner Householder?
Aye.
Mayor Shirley?
Aye.
That motion passes five zero. Item seven point two, authorize the addition of three police cruisers to the vehicles and equipment plan for two thousand and fourteen. Mr. Franz? Franz? I do it every time. Aaron, when you take my place, you better get his name right.
I told them they're all getting called Smith, Jones, Johnson, I'm just going to give them all nicknames.
There you go. Mr. Franz?
Yeah, I'd like to give you a little background of this request, because it's kind of an unusual situation, and that is, back in two thousand and eleven, it became apparent that Ford Motor Company was eliminating the Crown Victoria, which has served as our primary police, you know, I don't want to say it was, all of the police units were Crown Victorias, but certainly the majority have been since nineteen, whenever dirt was invented. They've simply been the vehicle for that type of use. That time, we located a dealer with a stock of those vehicles, and we purchased eight of them towards the end of the year and stockpiled them, and with the intent of using them over two thousand and twelve, two thousand and thirteen, and then there were a few that were slated for replacement in two thousand and fourteen, presuming ever they all survived at the end of their useful life. We did know that we were going to have to buy or purchase a few in two thousand and fourteen also. In, in the interim, and we projected a savings of about seventy-nine thousand dollars as a result of that, the vehicles were inexpensive compared to what we had just purchased earlier in the year, and it saved us the money of having to retrofit all of the ancillary equipment that goes into the vehicles to the new style of vehicle that Ford was producing at that time. We also thought the approach was sound because it allowed us to buy a little bit of time for the new vehicles to be in the field for a year or two before we started lining up to buy the new models. Since that time, we've had two units that were totaled in traffic accidents. Now, we did scavenge those units for parts and sell, as I say here, carcasses. We sold a couple of motors, we sold obviously what was left scrap metal, we scavenged parts off of them. We figured that that generated with the insurance savings about another nineteen thousand dollars. That doesn't count the value of the parts that we pulled off of them and used to fix other vehicles. The guys at Central Garage have been pretty diligent in that approach to this sort of situation. Historically, we have tried to replace cruiser units at about a hundred to a hundred and twenty thousand miles. Recent years, that's been extended a little bit, and we've been, we've been kind of pushing the envelope. Some of them are now approaching a hundred and forty thousand miles, and we have three vehicles in the fleet now that are, that are absolutely ready to go. They're at a hundred and forty thousand miles plus. By the time we get replaced, they'll probably be a hundred and fifty or better. If we put this off until next year, they're probably going to be pushing two hundred or better. I'm not even sure the wheels will stay on them that long. The repair and maintenance costs, you know, the first year we have the cruisers are under warranty, so it's essentially zero. First year maintenance for the vehicles we're talking about here, the three vehicles, is around about three to five thousand dollars. Second year is a little bit more expensive, perhaps eight or ten. We don't know what the third year is, because we typically don't keep them that long. So at the end of three years, we're running about eight thousand dollars a year in maintenance. Resale value, again, to close the three years, we get two to four thousand dollars apiece for them. Beyond that, if they get much older than that, the resale value plummets even further. I believe we sold one of the vehicles that we disposed of at auction last year for eight hundred and ninety-five dollars. It was obviously very high mileage, a very well-used vehicle. The department is now requesting that we modify the vehicles and equipment program to provide for three additional units this year, in addition to the two that were requested last summer, simply because the, the condition of the vehicles in the fleet, the mileage is such that they, they really do need to be replaced. That would actually put us exactly where we originally expected to be in two thousand and fourteen, if you count the, the two vehicles that were, were total in accidents. Total cost of doing so was a hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and twenty-seven dollars. I did provide some information on the vehicles, specific vehicles we're requesting replacement for. Mileage on those vehicles is, one's at a hundred and twenty-six thousand, one's at a hundred and twenty-four, the others at a hundred and forty-seven thousand miles. We're suggesting that these be replaced as soon as practicable. I made a note that the replacement vehicles are rated sixteen MPG. Now, whether or not we actually realize that is probably a toss of a coin. Current vehicles are, currently get about twelve, twelve MPG, so we're hopeful that the mileage will be somewhat better. We do have sufficient funds available in the sales tax fund to make this change, if you so determine that you would like to do so. I think at that, I'll shut up, I don't know if the chief has anything to add, I guess he's more than welcome, or he's available to answer questions if you have questions at this point.
Just a note, commissioners, too, if, what we typically do when we are putting together a capital improvement plan in our vehicles, where we have the departments work with Central Garage, they put together their plans and so forth, so this was a bit of a surprise to find that we had this many at this high mileage. I think, quite honestly, it gives some credit to the police department in the sense of when we say, you know, try to save money and so forth. They did it, there's no question, but when we saw this, we said, there's no, with the mileage levels that we have on these vehicles, and reliability's number one issue, these are just far too high. And really, quite honestly, that hundred to a hundred and twenty is probably too high. We're going to, you know, the more that the newer vehicles are out, we'll be able to see how they perform and where the, where the maintenance dollars come in, but there's just no question, these are just way outside where we need to be to ensure reliability and give them the tools that they need to have. So that's why we thought, and that, you know, Rod did a good job of checking and making sure that money's available in the sales tax fund, but we just felt we really need to get these replaced and get them back where they need to be.
Yeah, I, I think that it is, it wasn't, it was good that we could stretch that, but at four, five, and eight thousand per year in maintenance, I think diminishing returns would be the approach.
Yeah, very, very much so, and, you know, it wouldn't surprise me if we ran them a fourth year that the maintenance would run twelve or fourteen thousand, and, you know.
And what are, is it just engine maintenance that's?
Yeah, well.
I, I, yeah.
I, I, I could not answer.
Yeah, I've had some pretty, it's been pretty bad cars over the years, but I'm just trying to figure out, eight thousand dollars on one car in a year. What in the world happened to that car?
Yeah, they run.
At three transmissions?
I can tell you the biggest thing that I'm not used to, from where I'm from, is our cars here run twenty-four, seven.
Yeah.
Where generally speaking, you run them two shifts out of the three, but because we don't have that many cars, we're running them twenty-four, seven. So you can imagine your car that you have running twenty-four hours a day. The cars are averaging forty-six thousand miles a year because they're never shut down, unless they're broke, but transmission, brakes, tires, that's what goes out, and especially because you're running them so much, they don't, they hardly ever take a break.
How many cars do we have in the fleet?
Well, on patrol, which is what we're, ten, counting the, that truck you see driving around, the watch commander truck, that's the tenth vehicle, but nine that the officers drive. And one of the things that I was very surprised when I got here was how high the miles were on these cars, but I understand what's happened in the past, you know, we can't control. But that's an awful lot of miles, because actually, the, the national standard for police cars, because they run so much, and when I mean run, I mean they idle so much, you actually have to add a third to the mileage to what they actually have, based on the wear and tear on the engine because they idle so much, constantly sitting idling, so you can almost add a third to all the mileage, as far as what they actually have on them.
So we usually have nine vehicles?
You don't have nine out, there's, you usually have six officers out, plus a supervisor.
That doesn't seem like very much for such a big city.
Well, that's for another day.
It really doesn't. I mean, that's.
It's on my list. It's only a raised budget away, yeah.
It seems like we need more officers on the street.
But if you think to have nine cars, and I apologize if I, if I interrupted, but to have nine cars, even if you have two down, you're down to seven.
Right, right.
You have three down, literally, you only have six cars left for six officers to drive, and you have six beats in town, so you don't have a whole lot of, really.
I would like to see nine out on patrol.
The, I know that Kansas City has quite a fleet of motorcycles, what do we have in that?
Well, we have three, and then, that's for another day, too, but one of those is a nineteen ninety-eight, and I'm a pretty big motorcycle fan, I used to ride myself for the police department where I, where I'm from, but just to be operating on a nineteen ninety-eight, if you think, let's say, fifteen-year-old motorcycle, that's amazing to me, too, but that's not what we're here for today. But they have three motorcycles, sir.
What, what kind of vehicles are we replacing these with? What's the current, I didn't see that on here.
They're, they're Ford Explorers.
Oh, okay.
All-wheel-drive Ford Explorers. And that's what the petroleum people are going towards, mainly because of the amount of equipment, it doesn't increase every year, but it increases drastically from when I started to what we're carrying now, expected to carry.
So units can be used as, I mean, obviously, you can put dog cages in, I mean, K-9, more equipment.
Just more room, yes.
Will the watch commander switch to that kind of vehicle when the van wears out as well?
Probably not, because he, he needs even more room, that's actually a three-quarter ton truck. He needs even a bigger vehicle for the amount of equipment he carries or she in that vehicle.
In that vehicle, okay.
So we'll probably keep that.
When you're talking about this kind of money, too, is there an option for competitive
That's what we do. We're, we would put these out for bid, and they'd go out, I don't know how many dealers are on the list, but we bought cars from Texas and from Kansas City, as well as locally, you know, so it's, it's, whoever gives us the best deal.
Do they know where, oh, so where were these purchased?
The ones, the ones that we had stockpiled?
No, the, the three that you're talking about here.
We haven't purchased them yet.
Okay, so you're going to put them out for bid then?
We're asking you to put them, put them on the list. We do have two that are out for bid right now, or that will be going out very shortly. Oh, no, they're out, they're out, because the timeframe of the manufacturers, they shut down production on these pretty early, and we had to get those out early, they were already on the list, and I'm not sure when those bids are due back in. But then, these, we would probably put out later this year, maybe in the summer, when they open up for the two thousand and fifteen models.
So this is, cost here is an estimate?
Yes.
That is an estimate, yes.
Yeah, it's always an estimate, and your action today is simply to add these to the vehicles and equipment sub-plan.
When I read in here, fully equipped, is that a description of the vehicle, or with the added?
If I could add, the Ford has a package, a basic police package, but there's always things you have to add to it, like cages and such, the cages, but the biggest thing, the cost is more this year, basically a one-time cost, because we're going from an LTD, you know, the interceptors, to an SUV, so nothing, you can't retrofit stuff from an LTD to a SUV. So there is a higher cost this one time, but in the future, as long as they keep on going with the, the same vehicle, the, the equipment will retrofit, and they won't have near that cost.
And, and then, so with the equipment that, that is kind of outdated for us, is there something like an eBay for market for? I mean, is there, is there a market that we can, that you can be able to sell some of this stuff?
Some of them, for instance, our light bars, I don't know who would, I don't know anybody to buy some of our light bars that we have, they're, they're that old, so each of these new cars, we're asking for new LED light, uh, light bars also. But of course, yes, everything's up for auction, you can see what it's worth, and I know there's a process in place where you put it on, and whatever you get, you get, but I couldn't tell you how much that'll be, but obviously, that would go back towards the general fund.
Yeah, there are options, you can try that. I mean, Chief's right, you know, if you're, if you're a well-funded department, you're not going to have any interest in that. If you're a rural, not-so-well-funded department, it's a possibility that you might find interest, but we're probably not going to get a lot to do that, get a lot for those, but there are some avenues we can try.
I mean, we, we will put them up for sale, but again, they fit that particular model vehicle.
Right, right.
That's no longer manufactured, so you've got to find, you know, the right buyer.
You never know, somebody might want to put them in their basement, or.
Yeah, you know, I've seen a few signs on the wall.
Yeah, hopefully, they're working on a vehicle here.
Do you have any other questions for staff?
Just, just one last question for Mr. Franz. On here, on the fiscal note also, it's the source of the funding is special sales tax.
Yes.
And the hundred and twenty, the hundred and twenty-six that's, that's there, to do this is a carryover from twenty, it's six, twenty-one?
It was a different carryover from last year, because the revenues were a little better than the expenses, you know, so, so there's just a little extra cash there.
Okay.
And.
What fund do those normally come, is that?
Uh, well, actually, this year, the first two also came from the sales tax. We, we have split the vehicles and equipment, part of it comes from the general fund. I think we have about two hundred budgeted there. There was three hundred originally from the special sales tax, and then this would make that four twenty-six, or thereabouts, if I might remember.
So it's somehow the tax, the general fund, by the general.
It is.
Yeah, it does, I mean, ideally, your general fund needs to be able to fund these needs because there's a point in time at which you might not have that sales tax, and, and if you don't, there's going to be some capital equipment that we're not going to be able to fund in the future. We're not quite there yet, about two thousand and eighteen, maybe two thousand and nineteen budget year.
Two thousand and nineteen is the last year that the sales tax will be.
But technically speaking, yeah, it currently does protect the general fund some, takes the pressure off.
All right. Thank you, guys. Is there any public comment on this matter? If not, I'd bring it back to the staff, or back to my commissioners for a vote.
Madam Mayor, I, I move that we authorize addition of three police patrol cruisers.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Same sign. That motion carries five zero. Is there any other business?
No, Madam Mayor, I move to recess into executive session for forty-five minutes to discuss with legal counsel matters subject to the attorney-client privilege, and for the reason that public discussion of those matters would waive the privilege and adversely affect the city's interest in the matters, and also to discuss matters pertaining to the acquisition of real estate for the reason that public discussion of the matter would adversely affect the city's position in relation to acquisition of the real estate, and reconvene[1778.16]